You guys are good to go.
Oh, good. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilwoman Isili.
Here.
Councilwoman Pell.
Present.
Councilwoman Martel.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we have to start the work session with a review of the draft agenda for next week's meeting. It has 10 public hearings. The first is to consider amending Town Code Chapter 8 to override the tax levy limit established by the General Municipal Law Section 3(c). The second is a public hearing for the 2026 fire prevention contracts. The third is to consider any increases proposed in the maximum amount to be expended annually in the town of Southampton's special districts. The fourth is on the 2026 preliminary budget. The fifth is a public hearing for the proposed allocation of the community development block grant funds for the year 2026. The sixth public hearing is to consider the acquisition of 40 Redwood Road in the village of Sag Harbor and to amend the CPF project plan and the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property.
Excuse me, Madam Supervisor, can I just make a comment up at this one?
Sure.
I'm getting a lot of phone calls and I've been telling people to come to the public hearing or put, because they're interested about if they have a slip there, what's going to happen, unless it's all going to be discussed at the public hearing. And also that we talked about it in the exec session and I saw the comment, what the mayor said, that two of the town board members had convinced other people that's not true. An exec session, it's supposed to stay in exec session. I don't know how it leaked out.
That was in the newspaper?
Yes, it was on 27 East. All the board members were in favor, but we had questions on how it's going to be run, if the trustees were going to run it, the Parks Department was going to run it, if it's going to be used, the whole Southampton town, people can use it? Or just Sag Harbor? What happened to the Sag Harbor people who live in East Hampton Town? This will all be discussed at the public hearing. I was very, personally, I was very excited about this because there's a boat ramp there and that means all the town of Southampton, who people cannot afford a slip or just want to come out there for a day with their boat would be able to use it long as they have a permit for the ramp.
Yeah.
So all this will be discussed at the public hearing.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday, Tuesday night.
Thank you for the clarification, Bill.
Welcome.
The seventh public hearing will be to consider the acquisition of 185 Widow Gravitz Road in the hamlet of Sag Harbor and to amend the CPF project plan and CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. The eighth public hearing is to consider historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Austin Tuttle Family House located at 149 South Country Road, Remsenberg's Bianc. The ninth public hearing is to consider the historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Herman Ellsworth Terrill House located at 11 Walnut Avenue in East Quogue. And the 10th public hearing is to consider amending Town Code Chapter 312, Vehicles and Traffic, Amending Parking, Prohibited in Designated Locations Regulations on a portion of Sunrise Avenue in Bridgehampton. All right, so let's go ahead with the resolutions review. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51242 to authorize the purchase of safety shoes from the Suffolk County contract with Safeguard Safety Shoe Company. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51148 to authorize purchases from WB Mason Company, Inc., using the Suffolk County and Eastern Suffolk Bosse's contract. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51146 to authorize purchases of electrical, lighting, data communications, and security products and related products, services, and solutions from Graybar Electric Company, Inc., using Omnia Partners contract.
Town Board Resolution 51247, authorize purchase of trailer from Certificate Sandsteer Service, DBA Westmark Use Sourcewell Contract.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51152 to authorize purchases of trailers from Felling Trailers, Inc., using the Sourcewell Contract.
Town Board Resolution ID 51158, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extensions for embroidered and silkscreen clothing with NYSID BSN Sports, Jonas Enterprises, Inc., Woods Men's and Boys Clothing, Inc., J&amp;G Awards and Sports, Emergency Responder Products, and Fisher Signs and Shirts.
Town Board Resolution 51171, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extended with Long Island Mason and Concrete Corp. for requirement contract for miscellaneous concrete Town Board Resolution 51169, authorize supervisor to sign contract extended with Rosemar Contract, Inc., for requirement contract for failed theft reclaiming. Town Board Resolution 51170, authorize supervisor to sign contract extend Rosemar Contract for requirement contract for pavement repairment. Town Board Resolution 51222, authorize supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean Associate Engineer and Survey DPC for professional service engineer and permit and service for install of fish passage on Dam Trail in Flanders.
That's nice, a fish.
Yeah, that's going to be very exciting. Town Board Resolution 51235, authorize supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean Associate Engineer to survey DPC professional service engineer, regulate, permit, and construct administrative service for Whirlbone Landing, Inc., Southampton. That's another good project.
Town Board Resolution ID 51160, authorize supervisor to sign contract extensions for banners and signs with Fisher Signs and Shirts, LLC. Town Board Resolution ID 51161, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, authorize supervisor to sign contract extension with Gershaw Recycling for removal of abandoned junk and decommissioned vehicles.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 5116, Board to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension with North Sea Hardware for lumber and paint east of the canal. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51166, wait a second. Co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension with Tonza Automotive, Inc., for replacement parts for Chevrolet General Motors. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51272 to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Historical Concepts to prepare a pattern book for the comprehensive implementation of the Riverside Overlay District zoning.
Madam Clerk, can I please be added as a co-sponsor?
Yes.
Same, please.
I serve two, please.
Do you want to be on that, indeed, or the?
Yes, please.
Yeah, it's unanimous. It's a great thing. We're moving forward with this project. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51153 to authorize the 2026 renewal with ESRI, Inc., for software licenses utilized in the GIS Division.
Town Board Resolution 50286, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, authorize purchase of vehicles and equipment parts related to product from NYSOGS Contract with United Auto Supply of Suckus West, Inc., and Ellet Auto Supply, Inc., DBA factory motor parts and parts authorized by LLDBA Parts.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51159 to authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Fisher Signs and Shirts, LLC for vehicle graphics. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51165 to authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Quogue Sinclair Fuel, Inc., for liquid propane gas.
Town Board Resolution 51223, also co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, authorize supervisor to extend contract with Maritime Exchange Museum as sole source provider of fine nautical antiques for Tiana Life Saving Station.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51234 to authorize the supervisor to execute a no-cost contract extension with Coastal Science and Engineering, Inc., for coastal engineering services in connection with the Bridgehampton Beach Erosion Control District Phase 2. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51233 to authorize the supervisor to execute a no-cost contract extension with Coastal Science and Engineering, Inc., in connection with the Sagaponic Beach Erosion Control District Phase 2.
Town Board Resolution ID 51224, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Parks Land Surveying to prepare a survey for 130 Old Riverhead Road West, Hampton Bays. Town Board Resolution 51163, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extended for heavy-duty truck parts, Class 5-8 trucks.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51162 to authorize the supervisor to execute contract extensions with Chinookock Hardware, North Sea Hardware, and Suffolk Lock and Security for hardware and various items for pickup.
Town Board Resolution 51167, authorize supervisor to sign contract extend drainage construction with Delo Coal and Stone, Inc., DBA South Fork Astro for east of the canal and Rosemar Contract west of the canal.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51250 to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with N&amp;P Engineering Architecture and Land Surveying, PLLC, for the Fire Island Inlet to Montauk Point Project.
Town Board Resolution ID 51225, authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Pi Barker Fire and Safety, LLC, doing business as Brisco Protective, for 62 Red Creek Road, Squire Town Park Activity Lodge. Town Board Resolution ID 51231, authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Pi Barker Fire and Safety, LLC, doing business as Brisco Protective, for 62 Red Creek Road, Squire Town Park Dining Hall. Town Board Resolution ID 51230, authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Pi Barker Fire and Safety, LLC, doing business as Brisco Protective, for 62 Red Creek Road, Squire Town Park Storage. Town Board Resolution ID 51232, authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Pi Barker Fire and Safety, LLC, doing business as Brisco Protective, for 62 Red Creek Road, Squire Town Ranger Station. Town Board Resolution ID 51228, authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Pi Barker Fire and Safety, LLC, doing business as Brisco Protective, for 72 Dune Road, Tiana Beach. Town Board Resolution ID 51227, authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Pi Barker Fire and Safety, LLC, doing business as Brisco Protective, for 89 Dune Road, Tiana Bayside. Cindy, you have a correction for this? It's 56 cents and not 50 cents.
That's a budget breaker.
Yeah.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51249 to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with RLT Engineering Geology and Land Surveying, PC, for the Fire Island Inlet to Montauk Point Project.
Town Board Resolution 51168, authorize the supervisors to sign contract extended to furnish install with Cuisine Astro and Rosemar Contract, Inc.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51253, co-sponsored by Councilwoman McNamara, a resolution authorizing the supervisor and chief police to sign memorandums of understanding with Remsenberg's Bianc and Bridgehampton School Districts to implement the Handle With Care Program.
Could you add me to that, please?
Yeah, could I be added also? Same.
I think we should ask the chief to come in and give us an update. I know we had a.
Yes, I was very interested in the.
Yeah, it was a pilot program in Hampton Bays and now we're extending it, so it'd be nice to have him come in and talk about that.
Michael said yes.
Let's see.
I didn't hear whether you wanted to be added.
Yes.
No, not you, Michael. I'm already on it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Good answer.
All right, Town Board Resolution ID 51271, co-sponsored with Councilman Isili, authorize the transfer of the property located at 13 Shell Road, Hampton Bays, to the Town and Southampton Housing Authority to be developed for affordable housing.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 50934, a 2025 notice to bidders for vehicle fuel management system maintenance and installation. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51200, 2025 notice to bidders for supply plumbing supplies to the town. Is that the name of the company, Supply Plumbing? Yeah, I think.
Town Board Resolution 51244, 2025 notice to propose for engineer and design permit and service for trout pond cove replacement and fish passage. This is a very important project on New York Road.
Madam Clerk, if I could be added to that? Thank you.
I would also like to be added, please.
Yeah, let's all get on that one.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Yeah, and thank you, Bill, for bringing up the fish ladder idea so that we can get some addition on.
From them. It's a good project for the neighborhood. When you extend the sidewalks, it'll go up in that area, go right into it, a nice walk for the neighborhood.
Yeah. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51248 to amend the 2025 budget for various departments. Don't be so good about keeping track of all of this. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51150 to amend the 2025-2029 capital budget for the purpose of 1232 North Sea Roads, Southampton.
Town Board Resolution ID 51251, co-sponsored with the entire board, amend the 2026 preliminary budget and add new position in Parks Department. Town Board Resolution ID 51252, co-sponsored by the entire board, amend 2026 preliminary budget for Police Department.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51257 to accept the resignation of Ed Wisniewski from the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51258 to appoint Stephanie Davis as Chair of the Landmarks and Historic District Board.
Town Board Resolution ID 51134, co-sponsored with Councilman Isili, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Friends of Hampton Bays Library Magical Sleigh Ride to be held on December 7, 2025.
If I could be added to that, please?
Town Board Resolution ID 51120, co-sponsored with Councilman Isili, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bays Union Free School District Homecoming Parade on October 17, 2025, from 4:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m.
Also that one.
Town Board Resolution ID 51237, authorize waiver of Parks and Recreation Facility use fee for 2025 St. Rosalie's Our Lady of Guadalupe Run.
If I could add myself to that, please?
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51131, historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Austin Tuttle Family House located at 149 South Country Road, Remsenberg's Bianc. That's following the public hearing. And Town Board Resolution ID Number 51202, wait a second. That's not co-sponsored by anybody, but this one's co-sponsored by councilmembers McNamara and Martel for the historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Herman Ellsworth Terrill House located at 11 Walnut Avenue.
They should all be on both of these.
That's what I thought.
Can you do that? Michael, you okay with that?
Sure.
You can put all of them.
Add me to both of them, please, too.
Town Board Resolution ID 51262, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, authorize acceptance of maintenance bond in connection with 192 West Montauk Highway in the hamlet of Hampton
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51172, a resolution accepting demolition bond in connection with the demolition of an existing cottage located at 83 Sabonic Road in Tuckahoe. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51154, which is the 2025 standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials.
Town Board Resolution ID 51267, attend dair in Pembroke, New Hampshire. Town Board Resolution ID 51268, attend Reed Technique of Investigative Interviewing Course.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 51136, to accept the resignation of Alexis Morencio, Scale Operator in Municipal Works. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51128, to accept the resignation of Anthony Carpenter, Senior Park Attendant in the Parks and Recreation Department. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51144, to accept the resignation of Joseph Archer. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51173 to accept, I'm sorry, to appoint Jeremy Skerrata to Scale Operator in Waste Management. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51265 to appoint Joseph Cartelli to Sanitation Helper in Waste Management. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51264 to appoint Santino Figarara to Sanitation Helper in Waste Management. It's nice that we're filling these positions. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51130 to appoint Police Officer David DeLong, start, starting. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51105, appoint Police Officer Domenica Sinkmane in the starting position. And Town Board Resolution ID Number 51104 to appoint Police Officer Jake Jurgensen, starting position. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51106 to appoint Police Officer Joseph Dahlin in the starting position. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51186 to appoint Regina Johnson to Office Assistant in the Justice Court. And Town Board Resolution ID Number 51243, co-sponsored by the entire board, to notice a public hearing to consider adoption of the annual CPF Pilot Payment Plan for the 2025-2026 tax year.
Town Board Resolution ID 51259, notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code Article 4 Multi-Family Plan Residential Development District, MFPRD, as it relates to expiration of approvals. Town Board Resolution ID 51129, notice of public hearing to repeal and, I should say repeal and replace, Cindy, Chapter 330 zoning, Article 5a, entitled Affordable Housing Overlay District, Sections 29.1 to 29.11, rename Article 5a to Community Housing Fund Overlay District, and replace Sections 29.1 to 29.10 with updated standards in order to coordinate zoning procedures with the Town Board's process for community housing fund approvals.
So I just want to say that for this resolution and the one prior, changing the expiration dates of approvals, I mean, some of us are just seeing like this one for the first time, the one about the expiration, and, you know, I see that we're pushing it out for five years. I mean, I would have thought three years is more appropriate and.
It's three years with two one-year extensions.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the total of five years. It's a long time to have somebody have a permit out there and not take any action. And this one, I mean, so I'm not disputing that we need to address these two issues and certainly the second one about the overlay district is an important move for the town, but I really would like it if we would have more, another work session to go over these so that when we present it to the public for their input, it's really gotten full board input.
So I'm happy to have a work session in between now and November 25th, but this is the last night meeting until the end of February and I feel these are important and they deserve a nighttime meeting for the public. So I would like to put them on and the Community Housing Overlay District, we do have several projects in the pipeline that are waiting for a half hour.
Well, because it's, yeah, I mean, I was a little reluctant to schedule the public hearing because there could be considerable changes, but I did check with Janice Wilson and she said that given the section of the code that it requires 30 days' notice rather than just the 10 days. So I'm okay with scheduling the public hearing and if there's changes, there's changes.
There's changes, there's changes and I'm happy to renotice it and, but I feel like at least this way we give the public a nighttime meeting to weigh in on it.
Yeah, because in December and January, we don't meet in the evenings for safety reasons, so. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51270 to authorize the sale of a town-owned .5 fractional Pine Barrens credit. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51246, co-sponsored by the entire board, to authorize the acquisition of 189 Dune Road in the village of Quogue and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51091, co-sponsored by the entire board, to change target area of parcels to Village Hamlet Green and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan. We did have a work session where Jackie Finley pointed these all out to us. And Town Board Resolution ID Number 51092, co-sponsored by the entire board, to change target area of parcels to wetlands and to amend the CPF management stewardship plan. Similarly, we had the work session on that. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51238, a road review application for 8 Middle Pond Lane, LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated, situated at Chinookock Hills, is accepted. And Town Board Resolution ID Number 51241, road review application for Christian Leno, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated, in Hampton Bays is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51239, road review application for Paradise Found NY LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated, in Sag Harbor is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51245, road review application for the Joseph G. Farrell, Jr. Irrevocable Children's Trust, Suffolk County Tax Map Number as indicated, in North Sea is accepted. That was busy in that department. And then there's two add-ons. Town Board Resolution ID Number 51288, co-sponsored with Councilmember McNamara, to authorize the acceptance of a performance bond in connection with site plan known as Rivian LLC in the hamlet of Watermill.
Town Board Resolution ID 51291, waive parks and recreation facilities use fees for Franca Chunk or Treat Event.
Co-sponsor, Madam Clerk?
Same here, please.
Same here, too, please.
And that's this Saturday, right?
It's in the updates.
Oh, good. Okay.
Before we move on, I just want to clarify, I just read the mayor's comments, Bill, and I want to say to you that I did not disclose why that project stalled out. You were absolutely in support from day one and we even discussed, you know, potential pump-out boat, you know, situations and having the Bay Constables have a spot there. I think because it stalled out for whatever reason and I didn't disclose to the mayor why it stalled out, because that was discussed in executive session, he took it upon himself to believe that it was because there was not board support and I will clarify that with the mayor that there always was board support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Exactly, Bill. That was a 101, you know, that was a one-off for us. That was something we had not done before, so it was important that we looked it over.
Okay, well, that's, we're done, Cindy, with that part. We'll listen for a little bit. Okay, so our next section, oh, look, we're right on time, too, is rental code and the 2026 U.S. Open. But we want to hear about that. We've got a lot of people here. Come on up. We might have to pull up some extra chairs. Ryan Murphy, our Code Compliance and Emergency Manager. John Ortiz, Deputy Supervisor. Eric Steimer, Senior Director of the USGA. And John Ryan Celabertie, Manager, USGA. And then I see Mark Hissy in the audience as well. So, come up, John. I guess copy stamp them.
Eric Steimer won't be in attendance.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We all have that.
Eric Steimer?
Eric Steimer.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for having us, Board. I wanted to have a conversation about our Town Code for rental properties with you. It's our Chapter 270 of the Town Code deals with rental properties. The Board, in its wisdom back in 2017, 2018, made an amendment to the Town Code to allow, at the Board's discretion for the future, to temporarily suspend the transient rental portion of the code to allow for shorter-term rentals when there is an event of regional significance that comes into the area. And I think, you know, we can all probably call out that that section of the code was designed at that period of time with respect to the U.S. Open. The last time that the Open was in town was in 2018 and this action was taken in 2018 by the Board at that time and rather than having to suspend the entire section of the code or the entire code or anything like that, it was created by way of this local law to have a mechanism for future Boards to be able to simply suspend the transient rental section of the code by way of Board resolution in the future to allow for shorter to allow for shorter-term rentals during the time period. So we have a, we have an ask
Shorter than the two-week minimum.
Shorter than the two-week minimum, yes. The way the code sits on a regular basis, the minimum stay has to be two weeks. And what we would be looking for is to reduce that time during the period identified. We have a formal request from the USGA to entertain this idea as well. And I'm in support of the concept from my office, the Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management, and the Division of Code Enforcement does the rental permitting for the town, as well as any associated inspections and enforcement. And I believe that this would be a smart idea for us to move forward with for a couple of different reasons, overall for the idea, but also for the timing. We had had some conversations, the USGA, Kara was even involved in it from like a housing perspective. John was involved in the conversations back almost six months ago now about this concept. We knew that we would be considering it at some point in the future because it was done in twenty eighteen. And there was some timing conversation on it. And we've been getting a lot of inquiries to our office from particularly the local Realtor groups. Individual Realtors that are out there working for their clients that want to make sure that they're listing properties in accordance with the code. And certainly, we appreciate that, that, you know, they're professional enough to not want to advertise something that's not in accordance with the code. And so we're getting a lot of those inquiries, and people are starting to prepare already for twenty twenty-six and the Open coming into town in June. And so to allow people to adequately prepare, to adequately have their properties listed in accordance with the code, we've decided to advance this conversation at this point to now so that people can get out ahead of it. The other logistical aspect of that from our office is the longer that we wait to have the conversation, when we had originally sat down about this, you know, almost six months ago, we talked about potentially waiting until the actual start of the year. The problem that we would face with that is that I suspect that it would create a rush for us in terms of applications coming in. Where we typically start to see from about March through June, we have three hundred, four hundred rental applications coming in per month during that time period. To be fair, anywhere in the range of about two hundred to about four hundred applications per month coming in. With those people having renewal dates right around the time of the Open, I have some concerns that if we waited and pushed this off until the start of the year or after the start of the year, we would get inundated during that period, which is when we're also going to be in the high time of all of our final planning for the Open. So to try and add that workload on to what we're already going to be facing, I think if we took this action sooner than later, it would give adequate time for people to prepare. It would allow them to spread out that application process a little bit further so that hopefully we don't see a surge of applications within the time period that we're already in like peak planning phase. That's kind of why we're here today to talk about this conversation. It's a, it's a big timing thing. A lot of what we're doing in terms of preparation for the twenty-six Open is very timing-sensitive in terms of, you know, community outreach and this action with the rental code. And a lot of our other planning actions, they're very time-focused. We know when we need to kind of hit things by in order to be as successful as humanly possible. I think the other huge reason from our perspective that I would endorse considering this right now and that I ask you all to consider this is the impacts that this probably has, that the impacts that we forecast that this will have by taking this action in a positive way on traffic. The more people that we can have staying locally, whether that's attendees, whether that's players, whether that's vendors and sponsors, the more people that we can have staying locally, the more we can reduce the traffic volume coming from west to east during the time period of the Open in which we're already looking at, you know, tremendous planning for, you know, traffic and parking considerations. So by making this modification to the code, we will potentially provide a greater quantity of local stay opportunities for people in the area, which, as the USGA has cited in their request letter to us, they forecast that that will have positive economic impacts with people staying in the area while they're here for the Open in terms of, you know, spending money locally at restaurants and establishments and things like that. I think for any of our residents that do decide to exercise their option to rent their properties, this is a potential lucrative opportunity for them to rent their houses out during this time period and perhaps escape to elsewhere while, you know, the Open is in town, if that's not something of interest to them.
Ryan, it, so no doubt that there's positive economic benefits to the Open being here. But my question is, is how is it actually improving, or how could it be, have a positive impact to the traffic? If you are, in fact, reducing the, or allowing for a reduced amount of time of stay, that you are now therefore seeing more people perhaps stay two days and then go back, and then another two days and go back. Wouldn't you actually see the opposite, a more of an exacerbation of traffic because you are allowing for reduced?
No, I would say, I would say the expectation is no on that. First, we are looking for a minimum stay of three days on this request as opposed to just completely open-ended, you know, no minimum. But secondly, even if a person or a family or visitors were to stay for three days, those are three days that they wouldn't necessarily be staying at a hotel up west and having to commute into town each day to go to the Open instead. So you'd be placing them already locally in the community. And remember, at the end of the day, when they go back, you know, they're going to want something to eat. They're gonna, they're gonna maybe want to go shopping, whatever it is. Those people are now staying here, dining here, shopping here. So I think that even just for that shorter period, whether it's three days, four days, five days, they're not doing the back and forth during that time period.
And to piggyback off that, there's, we're going to have local parking options for the championship. We've contracted with the Elk Lodge. We're going to be able to use the Shinnecock Nation. We're working with them to be able to use their powwow lands. The Hampton Classic also for East Hampton. So we're going to have certain numbers and parking pass to that number at each of these locations. And then we will have a pay-to-park option of the Hampton Classic. So if somebody is the general fan that needs to get to the championship, they can be able to take their car, park to the Hampton Classic, and then take a shuttle in. So we're trying to consolidate that traffic as much as possible into the championship.
Are you doing the airport shuttle or the train stop again?
Yes, so different airport, not Gabruski for this year, just with all the development that's gone over there. It's, we've lost a lot of space in working with FA. We cannot shut down the runway like we did in twenty eighteen and previous years. So we are actually going to move our parking and transportation operation to Calverton Airfield for the championship, get as many people out there, and then shuttle them into the championship. And then same with the Long Island Railroad. We had a lot of trains going to the championship last, in twenty eighteen. But we're looking to work with the Long Island Railroad to extend that platform, get more frequent trains. So trying to get people off the road and get them to the championship in alternate ways.
It's also the crowds this year are going to be fifteen percent lower than it was in eighteen. There's been a deliberate ticket limit on it to reduce the amount of people.
Just a, just a note I would look at, I'm sure you already have. Instead of busing them to the Open, busing them to the Spion Train Station and getting them on trains there and running the train to the Open instead of trying to get the buses through rush hour traffic.
We're working with the Long Island Railroad. It makes it
No, it's not easy.
It makes it a little difficult with having the one track coming in and out. So we don't, we run into an issue with the timing of the trains. But we've asked, we've requested as much as we possibly can from them to be as creative as possible and work with them throughout the process.
And we are, we're actively meeting as a group, and the police department's very involved in this. Obviously, they're pretty much our lead agency in terms of this event because the largest component to managing the event is between a traffic and a security, you know, standpoint. But we're working with the DOT. We're working with, you know, County DPW for traffic plans and things like that. A lot of that's still in, you know, development phase that we really can't speak to any committed, like, or locked-in plan at this point in time. But obviously, the traffic is one of our biggest considerations with it. We know what the traffic is on a day-to-day. We know the efforts of, you know, the Board and, you know, the Highway Superintendent and everyone trying to look at the traffic, trying to study it. We know that this event's going to have an impact on it. So whatever ways that we can try and reduce that impact, whether it's through traffic design, whether it's through changing, you know, the rental code within the allocations that the code allows for to have more local stay versus more people coming in on a daily basis from out of town, we're considering every option to try and make it work as best as possible.
I understand the notion of the, of the out-of-town folks and perhaps the relaxing of our laws helping to, you know, generate more local stay. But I'm still worried about the fact that with the relaxing of the laws, you're also potentially permitting other, what we would normally deem illegal rental patterns such as unpermitted, you know, subletting, anything else of such nature. If you are, if you are relaxing the amount of time per stay, there's obviously less of an oversight on that, right? I mean, so is that a potential worry that you have with this or?
There are always going to be people that are not going to behave properly and, you know, defy the code. We know that. That's, that's kind of why some of my staff has the jobs that they have, right? There will always be work for us. By changing this code, do I think that there are going to be people that are going to negatively take advantage of it? I mean, there's, there's always the possibility for that. We will have staff on. We have allocated, you know, proper overtime for next year to accommodate the fact that the Open is in town, whether that's from a staffing perspective at the actual site itself is what we need to do there, or whether that's to accommodate the need to have, you know, people out and about in the town. Because although we do have to provide adequate coverage for the event, we know we still have to perform the normal function for the residents and the community without, you know, any kind of delays or encumbrances for the rest of the town. So we're going to monitor it. We're going to, we're going to do what we do normally. You know, what all we're really doing now is we would have to, instead of enforcing fourteen, we'd have to enforce, you know, a three-day minimum. As we, if we get complaints on anything, if we become aware of any issues, we will certainly be out there addressing them as they come up.
Is the suspension of the code, is that just for the timeframe, the fifteen to the twenty?
Yes, yes, it's a very, it's, again, so it's not zero. I want to stress that. We're not completely wiping it out. It's three-day minimum. So we're still requiring, you know, a commitment to staying. It's not a one-night, you know, come in, have a party, and get out of town. We will still be able to ticket and address those issues if they come up.
Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, even with our current code with the two weeks, you can only rent every two weeks. You could rent for a weekend, but then you can't get another renter in until the end of that.
We don't really like to
What I'm just saying, no, and I mean
We don't really like to publicize
And I have to say, I do know
As a potential strategy
I do know quite a few local families that plan on leaving during the Open anyway because they don't want to be here and deal with the traffic. And basically, they're using the rental income to pay for their family to go on vacation during that time period.
I, even if you, yeah, yes to your comments.
I just
Somebody could not have a flip within the two-week period. And if it was lucrative enough for them to rent it for, you know, to a family or a visitor for one week or five days or, you know, whatever, but did not occupy it with another renter within that time period and basically treated it like a two-week buyout.
Well, the whole thing is they could rent it
There is a potential.
They could rent it for two weeks but stay for a weekend.
Yeah.
And don't forget, too, you know, this field is really big, you know, it's as big as it gets. It's not like the Ryder Cup where you've got two teams of twelve, you know, you've got a hundred and fifty-six, is it? And, you know, those pros are all going to be wanting to do these rentals. They cannot afford to be shipping in from Riverhead or wherever.
Last Open, they were missing tee times, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, they, they want to be close. And so, you know, that's a big chunk of those rentals are going to be taken up by those guys, not to mention the officials and everything else.
And the caddies.
This, this is a completely different animal to the Ryder Cup.
So even the event, the event's a week long. So if somebody does a three-day rental, it's flipping over once, you know, twice. It's not, it's not like there's going to be ten different people in twenty days, you know, so it's really just flipping.
Yes, and we are, by, at this point in time, when we're talking about, we are still pre-peak rental season. So the summer visitors, to, again, go back to the concern, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. It's something that we've thought about and we've looked at. We're pre-peak rental season because school is still in session at this point in time.
Right.
So once school gets out, we all know Memorial Day to Labor Day, right? But in the, in the rental world, and when do we see real population swell within the town of Southampton? It really tends to favor closer towards the end of June. Like, we really peak out, you know, once we get into July and Fourth of July and everything else. While kids are still in school, we don't, we don't have truly the population swell that we have once seasonal residents can come out and stay the entire season without children having to go to school. So do I think we'll see some stuff? We expect it. We'll always see somebody that wants to try and do it for the wrong reasons, maybe, or whatever that is, but we'll be looking out for it.
So the existing code has a provision already that says if there's a regionally significant event, the Town Board has the authority to suspend or modify the timing.
Yes.
We don't need to change the code.
Exactly. You don't need to suspend the code. You just need to pass a resolution. And I've already circulated a draft. I'll have staff insert it into the system if it's, if it, we wanted to confirm that there was, you know, an appetite and a desire to move forward with this.
Was this done the last time?
This is actually based off of the twenty eighteen reso. The modification to it is actually the three-day modification. The twenty eighteen simply suspended the transient rental but didn't set a bottom-end limit on it. So it could have been one day. This is a three-day. So I actually think we've moved in a favorable direction here.
Looking at our kind of, we have every survey possible when it comes to the US Open. We try to get as much information as we can. And typically, that is our three, three-night range is what we find with their US Open. They usually are coming for the championship rounds. But when it comes to even our corporate clients, they're coming out for the championship, they're usually staying to that average of three nights for the championship.
I think this also achieves a happy balance to support our brick-and-mortar, although we don't have a ton of them, hotels within the community. By not decreasing it down to the one, we've taken them into consideration. There will still be opportunities within the community for people to stay at hotels and support those commercial taxpayers, you know, for the one- and two-day duration stays. By keeping it at the three, we're still leaving that space in between to make sure that there's, there's solid business for them as well as members of this community, too.
And I'll just add one other thing in case you weren't aware, that Southampton Village did just pass a two-week rental code.
And talking with Roy Stevenson about it, it seems like they can be able to kind of piggyback off of what the town of Southampton does pretty easily in their code, too, so.
This provision was put in just for this, for the last
Correct.
And some of the other, what about some of the other villages?
I wonder if the other villages included this exception.
So we provide enforcement for Sacaponics. I can speak to them. They have a seasonal rental. I don't believe that they have a two-week minimum. And we don't do their code enforcement, so I'm not a hundred percent familiar with their rental requirements.
I only brought up Southampton just because I know that two-week rental minimum is new this year.
But they may take a similar action if they know that, like, this is what's occurring in the incorporated portion of the township at large.
That's what I'm
Yeah.
And I don't recall any problems whatsoever. The last time, it went very smoothly.
I don't recall them because I was at the county.
Yeah, no, but I was here.
Wouldn't have been my problem at the time.
I was here.
But you were here.
There was debate as to put this code provision in, but it went very, very smoothly.
I think had it, had it been problematic, there would have been conversations subsequent to the last Open.
Change the code.
To change the code again, I think this was put in really as a lesson learned from the past to give this provision for everyone.
And I actually, I think the homeowners would rather do three days than one day.
Oh, yeah. I, well, I think if you were smart, you would. I would stay away from the one days.
Change bedding and all that other
For any homeowners that are watching this or listening, I would stay away from the one days in general because it's a violation of the code. But also, you're inviting that party house scenario. And we've had situations where, you know, violent street gangs have attempted street gangs have attempted to rent houses within the town of Southampton, and we've thankfully been, you know, tipped off on it, and it was somebody renting for a one or two-day rental period. And I don't know what kind of a house they would have had to come back to when they, when they came back after, you know, had that gang gotten the opportunity to do what they wanted to do at that house. So, in general, we're trying to avoid that.
That's scary. Plus, there's the, I think you guys, I don't know if you're involved with the, the program, what they call people for, the rent, the golf pros and the caddies.
Yeah, they, uh-
They're very picky.
Yeah, they, uh, we, we have our player services team that will help assist any player or caddy that's looking for a rental home for the championship. Um, as of right now, we ha, have a lot, uh, of people that have reached out to us, um, for the championship, but at this point, we, we've, anybody that's inquiring to the USGA, we're just pushing it back to real estate agents within the, uh, community just because, uh, we've had such an influx in it that it's, we don't have enough people to-
And this is kinda like the Goldilocks period right now to make the decision because, you know, Ryder Cup's over, and now the golf world looks at the US Open, that's the next beat.
Yeah, people are gonna wanna start planning, right?
Yeah, so, out of the hundred and fifty-six players, I would say we have, um, a hundred and, hundred of them qualify in, uh, based off their skill and ability, and then the rest are local qualifiers that we, some of them we won't find out until almost May. So, uh, those people, giving them this option to have, uh, to be able to have a home to go to later on in the season would be beneficial.
Yeah, well, it seems like we're all pretty supportive of this, so, and doing it now, you can put us all as sponsors, right?
Yeah, I just wanna make a couple of comments, uh, Michael, to your concern about the traffic. You know, the USGA does such a good job on this. I think the traffic in the last tournament was less than anybody imagined. To piggyback off what Cindy said, a lot of the local people did rent their homes and they got out of here. A lo, a lot of other people rearranged their schedule not to have to work those days, contractors worked around those weeks, and the traffic was, in most cases, a pleasure to get to the US Open.
Yeah.
Get to Shinnecock. Even the people from Hampton Bays drove to West Hampton-
I will beg to differ with that.
To jump on, well, you're a contractor.
We will, uh, be conducting a significant-
As a landscaper who had to cut lawns.
I'm aware also that the police are doing a lot of work on this as well. I was at the police department the other day, Chief Kiernan and the, the, the police officers are working at, on traffic strategies, um, so I understand that. I'm just relaying concerns that I've heard from the public about, you know, what they've experienced, so, and I don't think that that's a, that's, you know, a, a bad thing to do to just to reinforce what's, what's being done, you know, this year.
This is what we're here for, to talk about this and, and discuss that and talk about what we've, what we've already thought about and that we're taking that into consideration. That's exactly why we wanted to come before you-
Thank you.
So that this just didn't appear as, you know, a proposed reso on the table for everybody without this conversation having occurred, so that, you know, anybody that wants to watch this subsequent to the meeting today can see the dialogue and, you know, what we're talking about.
Yep.
And also the, the financial impacts. I mean, I, from the Ryder Cup that just passed, I had people, I ran into restaurants who stayed out here for the Ryder Cup and took the train or drove into Jones Beach to take the bus. You know, I mean, the financial impacts, like you said, our shoulder season is no longer there. We, you know, the summer season is now July and August, June is kind of a wash as far as the month goes. It's a good shot in the arm for our local restaurants and Main Street.
So, why don't we put it on for the November twelfth meeting?
Okay.
And, uh, let us know what, you know, what else you're working on and anything that we can do to help make things easier for next year.
Absolutely, I, I think from the standpoint of, uh, the town of Southampton has been nothing but tremendous to us, especially, uh, Chief Kiernan, um, the mutual aid support that we've received from them, Suffolk County, Sheriff's Office, and then even New York State, uh, Police, uh, it's been a real joint effort, uh, at this point. We had our first real kickoff of our all-agency meeting last week, or this week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it feels like it was, uh, a while ago. Uh, and then we've also been working with, uh, uh, we've created our own little subcommittee of parking and transportation, knowing the impact that really does have on the championship, uh, working with the DOT and, and New York State. So we're, we're trying to be as creative as possible when it comes to our ideas, uh, for the championship and trying to mitigate much traffic when it comes to it. We're not gonna solve the issues, uh, when it comes to the town of Southampton, we're gonna do our best to try to fix it for that week at, at least, so.
And we can learn from the traffic ourselves.
Exactly, exactly, working with, uh, Charlie too, just to make sure that we're, we're, we're doing everything right in his eyes.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your coordination.
Thank you, thank you.
And John Ortiz, thank you for your work in coordinating with the USGA folks, so.
I like the new chairs, by the way.
Oh, good.
Every couple.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Hello, I do need to talk to you about dog parks at some point.
Okay.
Do that soon, we like dogs.
Mark, include me in on that call.
I actually had-
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
I actually had a text yesterday from a lady in East Hampton, said there's no dog parks in East Hampton.
Oh, really?
They wanna come to Southampton.
Yeah, we got it all planned out, so we just loaded yesterday.
Good to see you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
All right, so let's move on to our supervisor town council member liaison updates, start at this end of the table today.
All right. So this afternoon at the Senior Center in Hampton Bays, there is, uh, Southampton Career Fair, uh, it's from three to six this afternoon. Uh, it's usually pretty well-attended, but the, uh, people presenting are very, uh, into what they're doing, so you'll get a lot of great information there. We did finish up our skateboard park survey, we had eighty-five or so people take the survey, it went pretty well. The feedback we got from the initial proposal is pretty much what panned out on the survey. So, uh, they have a great, I, great idea of how to move forward, and we'll be presenting that again in a couple of weeks.
That's good, that was a good response to the survey.
Yeah, it was very good. It was, and actually, if you look, it came from as far away as Smithtown. The only issue, the average age was a little bit older than you would have expected for a skate park, but I said, well, there's not many twelve and unders that take the survey.
Yeah.
So, you know, but the, the feedback was terrific. Uh, we did have the Good Ground Park Fall Festival on Friday, uh, great magician, and, uh, it went pretty well. I thought the, uh, I thought the Parks and Rec did a wonderful job. I mean, it's hard, there's so many things this time of year to get people to attend these, but it was a great turnout. Uh, the walkabout in Hampton Bays, the trick-or-treating is Saturday from ten to twelve, and the trunk-or-treat in Flanders is the same time. Uh, so if you, uh, want some candy or you wanna give out some candy, try to make either one of those. And the open mic, the youth bureau-
The one in Flanders is at the Maritime Park?
Loveland Park.
Oh, Loveland Park.
Yeah.
I would have been to the wrong place.
And the open mic is, uh, Friday night, tomorrow night, at Hampton Coffee for the Youth Bureau from six to eight PM.
Thank you, good update.
And I also was gonna say about the career in Hampton Bays, but Rick said, said already, you should go to that if you need a career. And also, I just wanna give a shout-out to, um, Mark Gregor, the Deputy, um, Highway Superintendent with the, working on sidewalks, they're working on down by the Lighthouse Road and the bridge right now, um, and we were reviewing more possible areas where the next step for the sidewalks were gonna go, and for Hampton Bays, and I got, one of my friends called me and told me that they saw a lady and a dog walking on the sidewalks who was complaining about the sidewalks, that she didn't want sidewalks, and she was using them.
Ah.
And that's a good scene.
Well, good.
And I was up with North Sea, some people with North Sea yesterday, talking to some people there, they were very disappointed that they might not get any sidewalks, um, just 'cause a few people were against the sidewalks. I said, they're still in planning, you're still gonna get some sidewalks. They said that the traffic up there is out of control, um, they, they're afraid to walk with strollers, taking the kids to the bus, and I wanna also give a shout-out to the Chief Kiernan, he, they, he has his rotating police office, I think they're rotating, but they were giving tickets out again on Scotts Road, and I went to pick up my grandchild, and I saw a car pulled over on the way, and on the way back, he had another car pulled over. Cause they speed up and down that road.
Busy.
Shortcut.
Well, thank you, Bill. Uh, let's see, last week I went to a senior skills breakfast at West Hampton Beach hosted, and a high school hosted, and they pair up the students with different people, and, uh, the place was full, it was at the country club, and Carabac was there, and, uh, you know, they pa, matched the students with their, with people that have a, share an interest for what they wanna study in college. So it was really nice, and Amy Demcek is the high school business teacher, and she does a great job putting the program together. And yesterday, I had a Suffolk County Supervisors meeting, and I wanted to let everybody on the board know that they are very supportive of us and our position with the cannabis and litigation, and that all ten supervisors are gonna sign a letter supporting the town.
Oh, wow.
Both, uh, us and Riverhead, and, uh, Rich Schaefer's gonna call the governor, and just, uh, the governor's rep was there, and we just really, you know, let her know how important this is, that we maintain our home rule and that we can control the time, place, and manner, and, and she said, and then one of the supervisors said, we should have a rally, you know, and then she said, could you please give me the letter first and let us respond to it before you do anything else? So, we'll see what happens, but that was good news, and we're thankful for their support. Michael?
Very nice. So, uh, I, uh, teamed up with, uh, Assemblyman Scivoni over the weekend, and, uh, we actually joined with the Shinnecock Nation for Heritage Day. This year, they had it on their territory, it was a really nice positive event, Congressman Lolota was there, um, Assemblyman, um, Quadi O'Farrow, as well as legislator Welker, um, and many of the tribal members just talked a little bit about their federal recognition. Um, also, I attended an event with the Fourth of July Committee at the Elks Lodge with Thea Frye, some other members, um, I know tax receiver, um, Terry Kiernan was there, um, where they're raising money for the, 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 uh, Fourth of July Parade for America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, which will be very exciting. Um, also, this week, I had the opportunity to team up with, uh, Rick Martell for, um, a PSA video with Chief Kiernan, where, um, we're gonna get going on some new traffic safety PSA videos for the holidays, in particular, the Don't Drink and Drive campaign, um, we hope that that will go out there, uh, in the next couple of weeks, um, especially as the holidays are approaching. And, um, I just wanna make a reminder for folks to pass on the note that November first is our Disability Resource Fair, second Disability Resource Fair that we're having at the Hampton Bay Senior Center. Um, it'll be at twelve o'clock, um, on November first, and I wanna just thank Jamie Bowden for all of her work in organizing and, and, uh, the task force for, uh, helping gather all the resources and services that will be present to help, uh, guide families, so, thank you.
You guys covered a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here going, what's that?
Um, the last thing that you had mentioned on the PSAs for the Don't Drink and Drive, we have, um, traditionally involved our Substance Use Prevention Coalition on that, so if you could let me know what that is, that'd be great, cause we usually get a group of people together for that, and we usually do a video, a short video, we did it in Town Hall one day, one time, and we did it elsewhere, um, in the past. Um, I don't know if you all heard, there was a pretty significant fire last week, and two officers were treated for smoke inhalation. Um, the gentleman who went to the hospital with burns, uh, turns out it was my husband's godfather, Harry Fulham, we call him Tweety, um, you know, he's a, he's a, he's a resident that everybody loves and knows, um, he actually worked at Rothwell Funeral Home, or he still works at Rothwell Funeral Home, so a lot of people know him from there. I wanna thank, and I, I did give them a call, officers John Parsons and Maura Torres, uh, Maura actually climbed up on the roof and helped him down, um, so I wanna thank them, I did call them this week to thank them both for, you know, what I know they do on a daily basis, and our officers are always out there doing this type of thing, but this time it hit home for me because it was a family member, so I did thank them, and we will be honoring them at the Police Awards for that, so.
Okay.
And he is doing a lot better, he is out of the, and ironically, the week before, the Sunday before this fire happened, my husband and I were at the Stony Brook Burn Center donating our annual check with our motorcycle club, and lo and behold, within a week, we had a family member there, and he has since transferred out, he's at the Southampton Rehabilitation Center, so.
And both, they're both-
Everyone's fine, everybody's good, um, but he did lose everything in the fire, so.
All right, well, thank you.